All right, so we will get started here. I'll call the meeting to order at 7:31. First up is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
I am the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Alder Allen.
Present.
Alder Rodafrada is absent with excuse. Alder Gerhart.
Here.
Alder Herbst.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Mayor Richardson.
Here.
Alders Crossman.
Here.
Alder Udel.
Here.
Alder Wheeler.
Here.
You have a court, Mayor.
All right, thank you. If there's nothing on public appearances for non-agenda items or new appointments, but I will say if you're here, it looks like people are still filling out the half-page sheets. So if you do want to speak, make sure you fill one of these out if you haven't, and you can just turn it in to one of the people on the ends if you have not had a chance to do that yet. And also, just a reminder, if you haven't been to a meeting before, we do limit the public comments to three minutes. So we'll keep time on that. Next up is the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
By Jay.
Second.
Signed by Gabriella. Anything that anyone wants to separate? Gabrielle?
Uh, the minutes.
All right. Anything else? Someone wants to separate out? All right, seeing nothing else. All in favor of approving everything but the minutes, say aye.
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 And oppose, nay. All right, that's approved. And what's on the minutes?
Yeah, so 7C2. There's just a typo. It says aye. It should say one other registered only rather than aye.
All right.
And then 7A. Oh, I'm sorry. Then the hub resolution. One of the, um, testifier's name is spelled wrong. Ari Lowe is A-R-I.
All right. Would you like to move to approve with the changes?
I'll move to approve the minutes with the changes.
Second.
Signed by Jay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay. All right, that's approved. Then, next up is, let me get to that page, but I believe it is the Administrator's report. Go ahead, Chad.
I'll keep it brief. A splash pad at McKee Farms Park will be opening on June 1st. Looks like the weather might be warm enough by then to allow our residents to enjoy. Any questions for me?
All right, seeing none, we can get right to the agenda here. First up is TTC tonight.
Yeah, I will move approval of Resolution R 10122, approving the 2022 city transit plan and network redesign plan.
Second.
Signed by Jay. What did TTC do?
Passed.
All right. And what did Pub Works do?
Passed.
Passed it? All right.
It also went through Finance. It's not noted here, but...
What did Finance do?
Finance approved with a number of amendments.
All right.
Yeah, we approved the G dash two along with the B, Amendment B.
All right. And I guess with the motion, is that approving anything in particular? And I'm not sure. Maybe for people in the audience to understand.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna approve it as written so we can discuss the amendments.
Okay, so just as written for now?
Uh, yeah, as proposed in the resolution.
Proposed FSF. All right, perfect. All right, Chad, do you wanna kick it off?
Yeah, sure, I can just at least give a very brief overview. As most are aware, Madison Metro has been evaluating their service over the last year or so plus. They've changed some of their service objectives to include an increase in ridership and to also have more direct routes that run more frequently. As they've been evaluating this proposed service change, they recently released proposed route changes for the new service. That happened approximately maybe two months or so ago. And since that time, obviously, the city and many others have been reviewing those proposed routes, and a number of amendments have been put forth as it relates to the service proposals from Madison Metro and the proposed amendments. So we have Andrew McFenn from our Engineering Department here, who's been working very closely with Madison Metro on the service in the city of Pittsburgh and also future Pittsburgh with our Southdale residents lately. And we also obviously have an opportunity for public comment, which will be forthcoming pretty quick here. And if there is anybody who has a need for translator, we do have a translator available in the room. Just please, you know, either walk to the back of the room and/or raise your hand so that that person knows to come and...
Do you wanna raise your hand once so people know? If you need translation services, he's available to help you out.
Okay. Excellent. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Andrew, would you like to say anything before we get to public comment?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, and I'm happy to go after as well if that helps, just to...
You can both do. I think it helps for people to understand what's going on before they comment.
Sure. And so my assumption is most of what we'll hear is about Southdale and Southdale and Overhead Transit Service. R 101-22 really is a three-parter. It approves the transit plan, that kind of update from the 2010 transit plan, as well as the network redesign and the amendments. And so all of those are embedded in there. I did send everybody this afternoon some updated amendments. Basically, it's all the same amendments with one additional, kind of B2 subtleties, not a location change, it's just a frequency change. And then there were some updated figures that I got from Metro just today in there. So those changed the hours and subsequent costs. But by and large, the amendments stay the same. So we can talk through that once we get there. But I'm happy to answer questions after, if you hear from the public.
All right. Excellent. I think if there's anything you want to add, Gabrielle, before we go public comment, we have a discussion obviously ahead of time or after that. But is there anything you want to add?
Nope.
Okay. All right, then let's get to public comments now. We've got quite a few people here. First up is, I believe it's Cynthia Walton Jackson. And then Elson Brooks will be after that. Cynthia, if you wanna... Up here at the mic, yeah. Then people online can hear you at the mic.
Just go ahead and start?
Yeah, go for it, yeah.
I live on Ski Court, and I don't take the bus. But I do see people that do take the bus. And as a community member, it's important to me that everybody have access to where they need to go. Work, school, to take their kids places, the doctor, themselves. And I kind of feel like this will not support, not this, but what was proposed won't support the community. And I remember when I was younger, I had lived on, behind where I live now, and that was 20 years ago, and the neighborhood was quite different. And now the neighborhood is, has more families in it. And a lot of times when you're a young family, you don't have time to participate in things like this, even though it might be vitally important to you and your family. So since I'm an old person now, quote unquote, I think it's important for me to be able to come here and not necessarily speak for everyone in my community, but just to speak for what I see. If these people are taking the bus that live in my community, they need the bus, right? I drive out every morning, I drive back in. People need bus service. And to have to haul somewhere else, it's difficult. Because on Ski Court, we're fenced in. If there were no fence, we probably could get through there a little bit quicker. But there is a fence. And there's fencing all around the neighborhood. There's that one street that's open. So you have kids, middle schoolers and high schoolers, people that work, having to get to a bus, where the bus just comes to them now. And I think it's, it's not thoughtful to remove that bus line from our community. I've lived in Madison all my life. And I think it's important for us to remember what this city is about in Madison. And Pittsburgh is right outside of Madison, right? So this state has been a state that's been supportive of people. And this is not supporting the people in a neighborhood that's gonna be a part of Pittsburgh. So if you want kids to get to school safely, we need to have a bus line that they can get to. And not everybody's family is Happy Days. If you are younger, you don't know what that means. But everybody's family's not Happy Days, right? Sometimes mom and dads, or mom and moms, or dads and dads have to go to work, or grandmas have to get up early in the morning and go to work. And so kids have to get themselves up or their younger siblings and go and get them to school, maybe walk them to a school, and then get on a bus. They shouldn't have to go hauling all the way around to get to the bus. If you have to take your kids and drop them off in the morning, you have to walk all the way out and around to go to that stop and then load your kids on the bus? I couldn't imagine that, you know? I just couldn't imagine that. And I don't want to see that. I don't want to see young families having to go through that. It's not right, you know? And somebody has to be able to speak for them. And I'm sure other people are here that will speak for those families.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Yeah.
I have Elson Brooks next, and then John Pat will be after that.
Hello, everybody. I'm Ally Brooks. Like Ms. Walton, I live on Ski Court, and I've lived on Ski Court since 2018. I'm also a community social worker. So I don't use the bus. I drive. But I've had many different clients who have lived in this neighborhood. And I'm here to support the Amendment G2 to maintain the full 11 stops in our neighborhood. Reducing stops to just one would have a huge effect on many different people's livelihoods. We don't have a grocery store in our neighborhood. People need to attend employment. They need to attend their medical appointments, their mental health appointments. I'm very concerned about teens. I've worked with a lot of teens who live on Deer Valley Road for whom walking home from a bus stop, even if it's a half-mile away, is very concerning. So I'm worried about elderly people, people with disabilities, being able to maintain their livelihoods. So that's why I'm here, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, John, you are next. And then Kelly Mullig will be after that.
Hello. I do ride the bus. And I live at Pheasant Ridge Trail. And I am in support of the change. And I, one thing I would like to say is I, it is imperative that a bus stop remains at the corner of Pheasant Ridge Trail and Deer Valley. Reason for that is I'm in a building with a lot of handicap people, wheelchairs, et cetera. And I see these people go, that's what their mode of transportation is, to go to the store, doctor, what have you. I also am on disability. Fortunate, I've had both my hips replaced, so I can still get around. But other people that cannot, I cannot see them having to wheel a wheelchair way over to Novation to a bus stop in the winter, so have you. It is imperative that we keep a bus stop at Pheasant Ridge and Deer Valley. It's also a very busy bus stop. I don't know if it's possible for the Madison Metro to pull up ridership at that particular stop, but I see people getting on and off the bus all day, all night long there. Lot of them, children, mothers, handicap. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I've got Kelly next. And then Mick Mulkey will be after that.
Hi, I'm Kelly Mullig, and I'm a housing case manager for Porchlight. We have a 16-unit facility right at the end of the cul-de-sac on Pheasant Ridge Trail. So the closest stop that everybody in my unit uses is at the corner of Pheasant Ridge Trail and Deer Valley. I have tenants that use a wheelchair, a walker, and anything further than that distance would probably be difficult for them to pretty much get anywhere. And I would say almost everybody in my building uses the bus. I have several tenants that have jobs that they need to get to. And so they rely on it also for appointments and as other people have mentioned, grocery store, things like that. So I would highly, highly support the G2 route. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Mick is up. And then after that is, I think it's Ruth Zuber. Go ahead, Mick. Come on up to the microphone so they can hear you online.
Good evening to all. Thanks for the opportunity of being able to address the group here. I think most of you know I've talked to kind of through the process here as, as we've journeyed for the last month or so on this. For those of you who I've not met, I've been involved in Southdale for probably 35 years, really as an owner and a manager of Maple Glen Apartment Homes. It's, it's been, it's, and I think as I, as I kind of put my arms around the whole thing, the comments that we've heard are great tonight. There's really two things I think you really need to focus on as a council. And that is the magnitude of the folks that are impacted by this decision. Earlier, I think I had sent a memo out to staff that I thought there were around 500 apartment units, but we've actually updated that. There's nearly 600 apartment units in that area. And most of them rely right on that transit on Pheasant Ridge and Deer Valley. And we took a quick survey today of our 130-unit property, of the 600. We've got 64 of those units are filled with families, some, with multiple children. So it's not just, there's lots of kids, they rely on that. And I think the other pivotal thing to think about is just the fact that this is a low to moderate-income neighborhood. And they, if you were to serve anybody in the, in the city of Pittsburgh, this is the community to really help out. They need your help. Lot of them can't be here tonight. They're mothers, they're at home, they're taking care of kids. Dads are working, some of them, two jobs. So it's really difficult for them to come out and express themselves in this kind of a forum. Very difficult. So I guess I am here as a voice of at least folks at our, at our property, at our 130-unit community, who've come to us and asked us to do all that we can to preserve what they have had. And I believe that it's the right thing to do for Pittsburgh. And I think if you look at the cost and you look at the 600-plus families and the businesses that it's serving down there, it makes sense numbers-wise. So I would encourage you to go with 16B. And also, I think that, that, what is it, Z, I believe? I'd also run that through the neighborhood too during rush hours. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I believe it's, Ruth is next. And then Joe Mathers will be after that. Oh, you didn't want to speak? Oh, okay. All right, then, it didn't, yeah. All right, Joe, go ahead. And then Claudia will be after that.
Okay. I'm Joe Mathers. I live on Rimrock Road. I have for 32 years. Kind of watched a bit of the comings and goings of the bus. And I've also did a little bit of organizing and surveying in the Southdale neighborhood over the years. And I have friends that live in there. And some of the, and also have someone whom my wife worked with in a care home and is still a resident down there and uses the bus. Uses the bus. That's his means of getting out. And if you have a bad record, he might look you up on the, for the Department of Justice. He's really got a memory like nobody I know. So the, I just want to say that the bus is the amenity for the neighborhood, that and the park. Those are the two things that tie that place together. It's very heavy families. The Maple Glen, down at that end, there's a lot of people who've been there for years and years. I mean, eight, 10, 12. When I went door-to-door, you know, you think apartments? I used to work for Community Action. I know this was not that kind of place. If places are well-managed, people stay. It's a good, good enough neighborhood. And, you know, you can, so the other part is having people get off on Rimrock at the four, you know, right, that's a bad intersection to begin with. There's no amenity, there's no place to stand. The businesses are, it's not shops, it's not something where people are looking out for people. You got people going back through there, the moms, the kids, everybody's talked about. The women, people have worked jobs, they, you know? You don't always get home in the sunlight and everything's groovy. So personally, I just feel like it's a mistake to not think of what you're taking away. You know, you can maybe cut that one point off, you know? But there's a lot more, the new apartments there that aren't even showing up on some of these maps. You've got the studio apartments, you've got the senior housing, gas prices. There's a lot to this. So I just feel like if you really knew the neighborhood, you would think differently. It needs this. I don't know who we're supposed to be serving to get there a little quicker if you can't, if not, if getting there takes that much longer, then, you know, it's just not where I think we want to be. And as our opening gambit to this neighborhood, I think the city ought to, you know, think about stretching here. And since you've heard from many nonprofits and service groups, I think any grant that you may want to apply for, you've got the people behind you. You've got the organizations. They know how to do this. So you may be able to put proposals. Pittsburgh's a little new at these kinds of proposals. You know, this is not your, oh yeah, we're the big bus people. We're not. I mean, I know Pittsburgh has been kind of getting into it, but, you know, isn't really have a big, long time. So I think you would have help for any additional funding you needed to seek, and it would be ongoing. So I, I'd hate to see this turn into some sort of a dumb lawsuit kind of thing. Cause, you know, that, that is a total waste of everything, right?
Especially you're at three minutes, Joe.
Okay. I didn't realize it was a three-minute thing.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
All right.
I like the 30-second warning.
All right. Claudia, you are next. And Josh Jenkins is after that.
Yeah, for translation, yeah. There's certainly some leeway with the translation.
My name is Claudia, and I've been living at the same place for over 20 years. Everything that's going on right now is some of the worst decisions I've ever seen. We're coming from Guatemala to Guadawurst. And none of you, this matters to. A lot of you drive vehicles, we do not. A lot of us don't know how to drive. My question to you is, is where is all the tax money going if you're not going to help us? Madison, City of Madison is saying that they don't have any money, and it appears that you do not either. What are, what are the advantages of living in Pittsburgh? It appears there's nothing. It appears that there's no answer from you because it appears that nothing matters to you. Everything is about money, money, money. It is very sad. Because when you were all young, you did not have to use the bus. Do any of you know what it's like to ride the bus at 5:40 in the morning, no matter how hot or cold it is? I have a lot of sympathy towards the children. It's very sad for myself as well. I work at St. Mary's, and I use the bus every day. I've lived in the same place for over 20 years, in the same neighborhood for over 30 years, and I've been in the same apartment. This is the first time somebody's actually translating what I'm telling. The first time that the lady was there, it was very sad. That's why nobody goes to meetings because they're scared of the police and they're scared of the entire world. Why did the police have to be there? I don't understand. All you did was waste time. And it was worse that you wasted our time because our time is more important. I don't know what else to say, but the last thing I'm gonna say is... This is the worst decision that you guys have ever made. It appears that... This is the worst decision you guys have ever made. Everyone is nodding their heads, but you guys are not making the right decision. Please make the right decision and stop wasting our time. That is all. It's very sad. From one bad place to an even worse place. She doesn't understand what she said that is so funny and why people are smiling. I can point at the person that appears to be laughing or smiling. But I am better educated than that.
All right, Josh Jenkins and Bellamy Meha is after that. Go ahead, Josh.
All right, good evening. Well, it's hard to know where the discussion's gonna go tonight on your part. You know, the, the, I think the opportunity that Pittsburgh has is to really represent a group of people that have no real functioning elected representatives right now. Town of Madison has, you know, many vacant positions. I don't see any mention of meetings with them or representation by them at Metro meetings. So I think what you have in front of you is kind of a worst-case scenario. Because to be completely honest, from a layperson's perspective, a bus user and a neighborhood resident, Metro's plan, you've been forced to deal with, you know, to play a bad hand, unfortunately. And we're seeing that in city meetings, you know, system-wide right now. People are pushing back. Because, you know, the geography of Madison does not lend itself well to the BRT and to the ridership model, which has been touted, if you read the literature and everything. It sounds great. But when you look at the equity numbers, it doesn't really play out. For example, low-income data, they don't separate UW students from community. So both qualify as low-income. And when you read the numbers about their equity assessment, about how this shift from coverage, which is what we've had... which is what we've had, we have coverage right now, we have the coverage model in it, it's functional. But the shift to the ridership model depends on equity being addressed, and it's not. If you group UW students in who qualify as low income population with community members like we have with us tonight, you know, you're grouping two entirely different groups of people together. So the Metro plan is, is, uh, based on, um, you know, a faulty equity assessment. The equity, the real equity assessment is yet to make it. And I think if they had done that ahead of time, they would have seen the neighborhoods like Southdale really should not be on the list for having their, um, neighborhood service removed like this. You guys didn't make that plan, but you have to vote on it. So now what I think you should do is vote for what the people who you will soon represent are, are asking for. And what we're asking for is Amendment G two. Because what we need is the service to be as good or better than it is right now. And that is, that's a right, it's a right. We live in a dense urban neighborhood. You guys get to absorb the neighborhood, all the tax base, the novation campus, the, the burgeoning businesses along Rimrock. That's gonna benefit the city of Pittsburgh. And what we deserve is a chance to be represented by you and to benefit from the services that, that, you know, cities provide. So your risk is to go ahead and counter the recommendations from Metro staff. But you should be confident that. Okay, let me just finish this thought, that when you go with what the community wants, that will matter in the long run. Because what Metro has done is gonna come back to them, and you do not need to be associated with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I have Bellamy next, and then Mary Sanchez after that.
Hola, buenas noches.
Hello, good evening.
Tengo cuatro niños, soy madre soltera, y no tienen.
Um, I have a lot of respect for what you're doing, um, a mother of four kids.
No tienen ni la, la idea de lo importante que es para mí, que mis hijos tomen el autobús.
You have no idea how important it is to me that my children take the bus. Close to my house. I work from six to four thirty.
Pago mis impuestos.
I pay my taxes. What I'm asking you is for my children. I think everybody here has kids. Um, it concerns me that my kids are gonna have to walk a long distance, um, during the cold days in the winter, um, to get to middle school and high school. I've been living in my apartment for over six years and I really like the area. I'm scared that when it comes to making a decision, because it is your decision, not ours. It's important that you, uh, take into account the kids because they are the future. Whether we are Latinos, Americans, or something else, the, we can all agree that the kids are the future. To me, it was, it was a big hit knowing that my kids are gonna have to walk a long distance to take the bus to go to school.
Yo manejo, pero he visto personas de la tercera edad que necesitan el autobús. Pienso también en ellos.
I drive, but there are elderly people that do take the bus, and I'm also thinking about them. Um, yes, we're all young right now, but eventually we're gonna get older and we're gonna, uh, be like the kids and need the same amount of help as the elderly do. The elderly also work and pay their taxes.
Hay veces ir a un trabajo para sostener su familia.
All that I ask is that you please, uh, take into account the children and elderly when you make your decision. I think when we, uh, think about this. Can you imagine the kids walking in the winter time and slipping on ice, especially to get to the bus? Uh, my child has slipped and fallen on the ice just walking outside.
Me imagino mi hija y mi hijo y mi otra hija caminando lejos, y me pongo a pensar. Llego yo a mi trabajo preocupada, como le dije. Soy madre soltera de cuatro niños, pago mis impuestos para que mis hijos tengan la oportunidad de tener un autobús que pueda llevarlo a su escuela.
I imagine, uh, I become very worried when, um, I think about my kids walking a long distance to the bus, especially in the winter time. Like I said before, I'm a mother, um, I have kids, and, um, I become very worried. And I want them to be able to take the bus close to home. Thank you for your time. Good night.
All right, Mary Sanchez is next, and then Elena Hernandez after that.
Hola, buenas noches.
Hello, good evening. The only thing I want to say is that everything you guys are doing is unjust. For the kids and everyone in the neighborhood. They're young kids that, um, are very young, and they're gonna have to walk a long distance with, uh, snow, rain, et cetera.
Si ya, pues si, a veces se me hace injusto que ellos estén esperando el bus ahí afuera del edificio por donde pasa con el frío y cuando está lloviendo, se están mojando, y ya me da tristeza. Ahora que ellos tengan que caminar más, es más, es injusto, es justo para ellos.
Um, I already feel very bad when kids have to stand outside by the bus when it's snowing, raining, et cetera. Um, just the thought of them having to walk even further distance to the bus, um, I, I think that's very unjust. All that I ask is that you please think about it, um, don't take the opportunity of taking the bus away from the kids. That's it. Thank you. Good night.
All right, uh, Helena is next, and then Gabriela Gonzalez will be after that.
She's in pass.
Okay. Gabriela?
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Gabriela Gonzalez.
Good evening. My name is Gabriela Gonzalez.
Estoy aquí porque quiero que, uh, se quede, se siga quedando la misma ruta del bus.
I'm here because I want, um, the same bus route to stay.
Creo que me he parado ante ustedes en estas últimas reuniones que hemos tenido, diciéndoles que lo, que lo necesito por mi hija, que ella está estresada y viene conmigo porque dice que, porque tiene que estar pensando en que le van a cambiar la ruta del bus, entonces.
Um, I'm here. I've talked to you before at several other meetings. Uh, my daughter is very stressed because she's worried that her bus route is gonna get changed.
El pequeño grupo de ahí de las, de los apartamentos, necesitamos mucho la ruta del bus.
I think, um, we can agree that everyone in the neighborhood, everything, everybody that lives there needs, um, the bus, bus route. So people can go to work, um, sometimes there's, uh, two jobs that people go to. Please think about it. Um, sometimes you think you may not affect a lot of people, but there are a lot of people that live in that neighborhood. There are a lot of elderly people that live there, um, with disabilities. I've lived in the same neighborhood for over twenty-two years. And I don't want to move away. That is it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, I believe the other people I have in here in the chambers just are registering in support of the G two route. I've got Elizabeth Bruno registering in support of G two with the comment, people need access to public transportation. Please do not decrease or limit the bus services. And Caitlin Eunice, uh, from Madison, who is, um, in support of Amendment G two. And then Ruth Zubor, like I said before, registering and keep our bus system as very needed in the Southdale Route sixteen B. And then we've got some people online that wanna speak. Who do you want first, Scott?
Charles Craigie searching. Hey, everyone. Thanks for, uh, letting me come on. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, awesome. Um, I manage the buildings at the corner of Deer Valley Road and Ski Lane. Um, and I just wanted to mention, we have, uh, there's two eight-unit buildings there, um, and there's six people that use the bus. I asked, uh, their primary uses, like, hey, what do you actually go to on the bus? Um, you know, I, a lot of the people are going to work, uh, so to and from work. Uh, the other thing that was brought up that I thought was a, a big deal is groceries. They have to use the bus to get food. Um, so I don't know, I am in, uh, big support of hopefully continuing the bus route down Deer Valley Road, down Ski Lane. Um, I think it's a very important thing. Um, I have, you know, like I said, six people that don't have cars or vehicles. Um, and I have major concern of what would happen, uh, to those individuals. Additionally, I wanna throw out there, uh, there's, uh, four people in the building that are seventy-plus years old. Um, those are the bus riders, um, so I don't know, you know, how those people would access simple things like the grocery store without the bus. So, thanks for listening.
All right, thank you. All right, go ahead. That's fine, yeah. Try this again with a little better audio.
Hello, my name is Kirsten Huesleman, and I live in the Ally Drive Dunn's Marsh neighborhood. The changes in Madison Metro's redesign disproportionately affects historically disenfranchised and under-invested in areas of Pittsburgh and Dane County District twenty-seven, which I was recently elected to represent on the Dane County Board of Supervisors. I and many in the communities that I now represent feel that these decisions being voted on tonight have been rushed, lacked important community engagement, and are coming well before our communities have begun to adequately recover from the pandemic, which is still ongoing. Public transit is a vital public service. We should be investing in more public transportation, making it more accessible to address environmental, economic, racial, disability, housing, and other injustices experienced by too many of our Pittsburgh neighbors. Not making it less equitable, which is the ultimate impact of this redesign process so far. I encourage the Pittsburgh Common Council to postpone this vote to allow for more time for the community to vet and improve upon the proposals before you tonight. Although none of these proposed amendments are a hundred percent ideal for the affected Pittsburgh communities, I do support the following proposals. The Southdale Neighborhood's preferred amendment, Route G two, which would mean more access within the neighborhood. The only amendment to the Ally Drive Dunn's Marsh neighborhood, Route D two, which would provide closer access to those in the western part of our neighborhood. The amendment Route Z one, which provides stops further into the Traverse neighborhood. I also believe that access to the senior center and other vital city buildings is needed as well. Which is why I also support Amendment B, Route B two one. There are no amendments to the original Metro proposal for the King James neighborhood. I understand that certain road design elements in this neighborhood make some of the possible alternative routes impassable for buses. However, I also wonder if there would be routes that would offer more access that, to those in the neighborhood that are not reflected in this current plan or decision-making process. Another reason I would encourage to post, a postponement of this vote and for additional community engagement and consideration on this matter. I urge you to listen to these communities, prioritize impact and equity over intent, and do better to represent those most impacted by these decisions. Thank you for your consideration on these matters.
Is that all of the people we have online, Scott, for this item anyway? All right, we also got a number of emails. Uh, these people were in favor of the G two, uh, change. We've got, uh, Duran Martinez, I'm not sure from where, Andrea Walker from Madison, Mary Curtin from the Town of Madison, Ariane Davis, uh, Josh Jenkins, who spoke earlier, Rebecca Mulli from the Town of Madison, Lori Muleman, I think we heard from her earlier as well, Robin Pedan, I think we heard from as well from the Town of Madison, uh, Dana Pelaban from Pittsburgh, and, uh, Pio Pachowski from Madison. And a couple people who referenced sixteen B, I think they're actually mean that they're also referencing the G two route. I think sixteen B might be the actual bus line. Uh, and so Avery Canston from the Town of Madison and Shaleen Shank from the Town of Madison. And then we did have one person, uh, in support of the Z one change in Terabassa Philosophium. And I believe that's all we have for public comments. And so I don't know, Scott, I think we have someone from Madison Metro online as well. And then maybe it, it might help just to explain too that we contract with Madison Metro for these services. And so they've done this redesign and kinda told us, here's what we think. And now this is our opportunity to hopefully make some modifications as well. So I don't know if you'd like to go ahead, Andrew?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I failed to mention Mike Chikvalla here is here from, uh, Madison Metro. He's the project manager on, doing the full network redesign. But yeah, so Madison Metro and Pittsburgh staff started talking about this in early two thousand twenty-one. Um, you know, we've been kind of working together on this, but a, as you mentioned, Madison Metro really, you know, they're, they're the, uh, subject matter experts. They proposed the initial, um, base network. subject matter experts. They proposed the initial, um, base network, and then we worked through what amendments might be based upon, uh, community feedback. So unfortunately, we didn't hear about some of these issues until later in the game. And I think that's kind of reflective in some of those amendments, um, you know, just trying to make sure we were, you know, we kind of started small with what, what was reasonable and kind of the overall, uh, process and intent of the Madison Metro redesign of, of streamlining services. But then, as we heard more and more from, from folks in the neighborhood, we wanted to make sure that those options got represented, at least as, as, as potential options in front of you, uh, tonight. And so I'll just mention, I, I can quickly share my screen, um, just to note, uh, some of these, uh, quick changes that I emailed, uh, to folks earlier today. Mainly just to make sure that everybody's on the same page as far as what options there are. And so, you know, you'll see, you know, all these, uh, amendments look familiar. The G two, um, we kind of specified this medium deviation, so, uh, just to go back to, um, uh, you know, the original plan, um, just to kind of specify what that looks like. So we have, uh, currently the G two option, uh, is conditioned on, uh, this, this long-term connection being made. Um, so basically, in the short term, uh, and before this connection would be made, you would have this longer route, um, that would go through a very similar route to what the Route sixteen does currently. So the Route sixteen comes down, um, Oregon Road, uh, to Rimrock. And so that would be basically a, a slight deviation so that, from Route sixteen, so that, uh, that connection could be made at a signalized intersection, that would speed it up. Uh, but then in the long term, potentially, once that road connection would be made, um, you could shorten that. That's a long-term decision, so not necessarily part of this network redesign. But, uh, we just wanna offer that as a potential, and then offer what that cost might be in the future. And this is full, uh, what, basically what a, an annual cost would be, both in hours and raw costs and, and, and net costs. So hopefully that specifies that, so that, again, this is the longer deviation in the short term. This is the shorter deviation potentially in the long term. Uh, B two wasn't really mentioned too much in the previous commission meetings, mainly because we weren't, uh, totally clear that it, it had a, a huge impact on, on Pittsburgh. Um, but there's two amendments, so this is basically, as, as Mayor mentioned, sixteen B is the, basically the, the name of the same route, um, or amendment in the Madison Metro packet. There's different, two different names. But it's really this, uh, this, um, thirty A and thirty B that we hadn't really specifically mentioned before. It, there's no location changes, it's just service changes, basically service frequency changes, that we just wanna mention. It is an amendment that would be affecting the Route B, but it also affects the entirety of the Route B, um, in, in Madison as well. So it's, it's definitely a joint decision, but I just wanna offer it, um, as a, another potential, uh, amendment to, to tweak and, and provide recommendations to Metro for. So with that, I've said a lot. Um, I, I just kinda wanna offer that the amendments as presented, as staff recommended, you know, there's been a lot of evolution. We were trying to keep it consistent so that we didn't throw a new amendment on there and, and have it be kind of included in the packet. So we've kind of kept the recommendations the same throughout, and there was three iterations of that. Um, but I'm happy to talk to you specific amendments, pros and cons, if, if you're interested, so.
And just to clarify, I believe that the motion is the green items for now. Now, we can make amendments to that, but as of now, the amendment is for the items in green. As through discussion, I think there's gonna be some amendments proposed, but, um, just wanna make sure people are clear on what is currently proposed and where we go from there. So, did you wanna speak, Gabriel?
Actually, I think, I'll throw it to Jay if that's okay.
All right, Jay. Yeah, I guess, um, the, uh, Mike, did you wanna say anything from Madison Metro perspective at all?
Uh, sure, if, if I could, just, just briefly, I'm, I'm Mike Chafala from the City of Madison and Metro Transit. Um, and so, uh, thanks for, uh, for doing this and working with us through this process. And, uh, thanks, everybody who, who spoke today. Uh, I think we're certainly, um, interested in making the transit system the best it can be, uh, accommodating the needs of the neighborhoods while also accommodating the needs of the traveling public who are, you know, needing to get places in a, a, a reasonable amount of time. Uh, so I think, uh, most of what we've heard today and, and in the last few months, few, few weeks, is about the Southdale neighborhood. Uh, I think, uh, from, from our perspective, we feel that the long-term solution is to complete the Latitude Forty-three to, uh, Deer Valley connection, and then, um, use that, that route. Uh, use the, so it would be Badger, uh, Pheasant Ridge, Latitude Forty-three, and then Novation, the, I think the, the quote, uh, medium loop. Um, we feel that that's, uh, that provides kind of the right balance of service to the neighborhood while uh, making this route, which is called Route G, a, a more streamlined and, and, uh, more attractive version of Route sixteen. Uh, just to clar- clarify some of the other thi- things that have been talked about today. Uh, so I apologize for the, the naming conventions and the inconsistencies there. The, the story on that is that, uh, we started these conversations with the City of Pittsburgh before we were completing, we were, we had a complete list of amendments for the entire system. And so we didn't have numbers for the entire system. And, uh, so, uh, for the Pittsburgh materials, we used names such as G one and G two. Um, when we made the, the full list of amendments, we then numbered them. So G one and G two is the same thing as sixteen A and sixteen B. Uh, so some of those, those names are interchangeable, and so, uh, that's just, uh, inconsistency and, and, and timing issues. So I apologize for that confusion. Um, but I think that's all I had to say. Uh, if there are any questions, of course, I'm here, uh, to, to provide answers.
All right, I think we can go to questions and comments from the council. Jay, do you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, so this, uh, this picture up here is, uh, the, the blue one is what Metro, uh, has in there, in the packet as option sixteen B, G two. It's gone by a variety of different names. Um, first of all, I wanna say thank you all for coming here tonight. Um, we are elected representatives and we're here to represent you. Uh, I, I have heard some feedback that the translation services that have been provided at other meetings have not been very good, and I apologize for that. Uh, I hope tonight what we provided was better and got the points across that you needed to get across. Good. So, one of the things, uh, that I wanna start out with is this. Um, these metro, these changes that are being made to the metro routes are not because of the annexation. This was a process that Metro started independently of the annexation. This is affecting the entire metro system. So I have heard people say they just wanna keep the sixteen route the way it is, but none of the numbered routes. Well, I think, uh, that's not true. I think there's one or two numbered routes that are remaining. One of them is for Epic, and I think there's another one. But regardless of that, the numbered routes that you have gotten used to with the transfer points are going away. That whole system is going away, and it's going to these new lettered routes. Um, I, uh, needless to say, I think this process has been a little frustrating for everybody. I don't live in your neighborhood, but I'm going to be your elected representative come November first. And so I've spent a lot of time, uh, in your neighborhood over the last few weeks, as this issue has become more and more. And it's become pretty clear that outreach to your neighborhood about, uh, about these changes to the routes has not been very good. And, um, part of that's on Pittsburgh, part of that's on Metro, part of it's on the Town of Madison. And actually, the Town of Madison should have been taking the lead for outreach, but because of the pending annexation, the Town of Madison's kind of checked out. Uh, and I think that's, it's a hurdle we have to get over. I think we're making some progress in getting over it. So, having said all that, I wanna move into these, these little maps. So Metro has, has this G two route, this sixteen B that you see in the blue over there. And what they're proposing as an option, now, this is not what the current proposal is. Metro's current proposal is that sixteen A thing that everybody thinks is awful. So, uh, it's up to us to make a recommendation. So Metro's current proposal is this. Now, I made a different map because this, the map that I made with the green line, and it's not showing up very well there, and I apologize for that. But, um, I, I printed out some copies that are available on the back there if you wanna look at it. What I am, what I'm showing there is what Metro is showing in the dotted line. And, uh, with, the, the issue that's involved here is Metro is trying to make these routes as short as possible. That's also, that also means that people are going to be getting less service. And that's, that's a real problem. I think the council needs to understand that, um, within this neighborhood, you have people who are lower income, many of them are disabled. Many of them require assistance just to get around. I got a call this afternoon from a woman who's in the hospital with her husband right now, today, because he had both of his legs amputated and he's had some other illnesses. He gets around on a wheelchair, but you can't ride a wheelchair six blocks to a bus stop. That's ridiculous. People made their living decisions for a couple of reasons. One is that there was good public transit availability in this neighborhood. And the other is that the rents weren't very high. I mean, uh, I'm going to be moving in about two weeks, or about two months, to another apartment in my neighborhood, not too far from where I live now. That apartment is going to cost me two thousand dollars a month. And that is pretty typical, that's a two-bedroom apartment, twelve hundred thirty-four square feet. That is typical of the new apartments that are being built in Pittsburgh. Two thousand dollars a month. The people who are living in this neighborhood are paying anywhere from about eight hundred dollars a month to twelve hundred dollars a month, maybe a little more for some units, but, but they're paying half of what new apartments in Pittsburgh cost, mainly because they can't afford to live in the new apartments that are being built in Pittsburgh. I'm fortunate that I can, but they can't. And so to have people who are, who don't have a lot of money, and that's why they're living in this neighborhood, to take away one of the few services that they have is an abomination. Now, the reason I drew this, this second map, uh, is be, is for a couple of reasons. One of the concerns that I have is that where the circle is right on there right now, that, there is, there is currently a green field, well, it's not really a field, it's a, it's a rocky, messy area that has two utility pools in it, and the city has been planning to connect Deer Valley Road across to what is now called Latitude Forty-three Street. So Metro's idea is that with this G two plan, that once that connection is made, they want to take the bus off of this larger loop that they're showing in dotted line and I'm showing in a solid green, uh, and basically cut off uh, a big chunk of this neighborhood from access to bus service. And I think that's also an abomination. Um, I sat right here at this intersection the other day. Um, and I, in the time I was there, this was in the middle of the day, it was like two o'clock in the afternoon. I watched, uh, six buses come by and stop, three in each direction. And each time, people were getting on and off of that bus. And that is on a section that Metro would rather just cut off, uh, for tur, in, for the efficiency of going straight across there. That's not acceptable to me. Um, I drove this route and I, uh, so I don't think, I will say this, even if we get this route approved, I don't think we're gonna end up with eleven stops on it. I drove it yesterday, I've been driving it on and off and thinking about how this is gonna work, and I think we're gonna end up with five or six stops on this larger G two route. Uh, I think that the actual placement of stops is another thing, but there's already two, there's already two shelters there, or three shelters. So there's no reason not to utilize those under the new system. In any event, um, the, the entirety of this route, when I turned onto Badger Road, from the time that I looped all the way around here and I, I pretended to make five or six stops to let people in and out of my car, uh, to the time I got back to Rimrock Road, that was five and a half minutes. Uh, this, this bulb here that Metro wants to cut out of this, if you just go straight with this, you end up with about a three-minute, uh, you end up with about a three-minute loop. That, so the, this extra piece adds about two and a half minutes to the route. And I don't see any reason why that should not be the way this route goes, even after that road connection is built. So I, I drew up this map, which I distributed to the council earlier today. There's copies of it in the back if you wanna take a look at it. Um, I'm sure it will be included in the minutes because I'm gonna make a motion in just a minute. But what I, what I want to do is offer this as a substitute G two amendment to get rid of that connection that cuts off this, this piece that Metro has through here. And you can see from, from this map, although you can't see it very well on that screen, all these little gray buildings over here, these are apartment buildings that people are living in. And you heard it tonight from a couple of residents who are living on Ski Court. And for those residents, you know, you might think you could just walk up this road, you could just ru- walk up, uh, uh, Pheasant Ridge and get to the bus stop, but you can't because these, these apartment buildings that are here have fences behind them. So you can't get, you can't get from here to here without going a very long way around. Um, besides that, even if you were to try to do that, you'd be treading on private property, which isn't something you're supposed to be doing either. So, uh, having thrown all that out there, I would like to make a motion to approve this substitute G two map, eliminating the connection on Latitude Forty-three Street and keeping the larger circle that would go down, uh, uh, Ski Lane and Novation.
Second.
Second. Say it by Gabriel first. All right, further discussion on the amendment, Gabriel?
Yeah, uh, so just for everyone that's watching, so we're, we're gonna talk about that G two amendment that you've all been testifying and, and in support of. Uh, thank you all for coming out. Thank you. It is unfair that you had to go up, come out a couple of weeks ago and talk about this, and then come out again. I, I acknowledge that that's unfair, so thank you for making the time to come out twice in such short succession. I hope you know that this G two amendment would not have existed if you hadn't come out a couple of weeks ago to that meeting. So you did this, um, and your advocacy tonight made this, it made it abundantly clear that this is what needs to happen. Um, I am so grateful for you for coming out. I, um, this, this amendment, uh, it, it may not, may not be perfect, but it brings the service back into the community. And I, I guess more than, more than any other amendment tonight, I think this one is the one that needs to happen, and it's worth the investment. I am excited to have you in our community. Uh, I took a walk around the neighborhood last week with one of your residents. It's beautiful. I saw families out playing, uh, I saw people around, and I'm so happy that you're gonna be joining us. And I think that as a council, we need to welcome you into the city by making an investment and making this route work. We didn't make the decision to change the route, but we have to make the decision to spend the money to invest in this community and make sure that you have the service that you need, because it's not, it's not a nice-to-have, it is a necessity. Um, and, uh, I fully, fully support this amendment, uh, and, um, interested to hear what the rest of the council has to say. Thanks.
All right, I've got Jim, then Randy, and then Joe. Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, I really support this. Um, I'm one of those kids who, um, grew up in Philadelphia and at the, um, when I was in fourth grade was using public transportation. And it was very important to, uh, me and my family. In fact, I can't even imagine what my life would be like without, um, public transportation that's very accessible. And, um, I mean, it's just economic freedom and it's personal freedom. I mean, the things that I was able to do, you know, when you only have one car in the family, and, you know, people are working and you just need to, um, just get around, just relax, just get with friends and everything. It was that public transportation that was really important. In fact, I'm in Philadelphia right now, and just, uh, you know, the cost savings of public transportation. I mean, I could get from the airport to where I'm at now for seven bucks. Um, it would take about fifty-four dollars just by Uber to get where I'm at now. So this isn't needed. I can't imagine people living without public transportation. I can't imagine people living without public transportation, and I really support this.
All right. Randy, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I too want to thank all of you for coming out. Your voices were heard, and you opened our eyes to some, some real issues that exist. And I'm very frustrated, disappointed in the, the original design. I had an opportunity to drive your neighborhood and, and to get a full understanding of what you may be up against and what may exist. I mean, I want to take this a little step further. For those who do not know your area, just take a look at Google Maps, and I have this up on my screen right, screen right now. And it's just so evident that your entire community was discounted, and I'm sorry for that. But again, your voices that brought it to our attention, that something needs to be done, and in the very near future, you're going to be part of Fitchburg, and I think it's important to right that wrong. And so I'm very in support of this amendment, and I urge all of my fellow alders to vote for it as well. Thank you.
Joe, go ahead. And then Dave after that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have much to add. I'm in full agreement with what the rest of my council members said. I, I also want to thank everybody for coming out and, you know, just to testify to the power of community organizing, and to please continue this, and to please let us know, you know, when you have needs. And, you know, I want to thank Josh in particular for showing me around the neighborhood and to say that you have our ear, and you have our ear not just on this issue, but any other issues that, you know, continue to come up. You know, structural disenfranchisement is real, and, you know, it's our job as elected officials to represent you and to really seek equity. So again, thank you all for coming out.
Dave, go ahead.
Andrew, can you bring up the, the options again with the prices? You know, I'll just start out, I, this is a, this is a need, you know, this, this is one, you know, I've, I've kind of prioritized, you know, needs as, if you know me, and this is a, this is a need. But the question I have, the gross cost of those routes now, who's paying that gross cost right now? And I see the net, the net cost, you know, for instance, these routes are in the town of Madison, the G, the one with the 233, and then it would be 77, 77,000, or, you know, who's paying the gross cost right now and versus the net? I, please explain the, explain this, or maybe the Madison Metro person to me.
Yeah, I can take a crack, and then Mike, if you want to jump in. So the gross cost is the full cost of that service, basically the service hour, the cost per service hour multiplied by, you know, the 1,600 or 2,600. The net cost is after we receive operating assistance from WISDOT. So basically, we submit an application every year with how many hours we have, and then they give us some assistance in a percentage basis.
Is that guaranteed to continue?
It, so yes, it's based on 5307 funding, which I believe just got reauthorized for five years. So it's, it's a long-established fund, so it's definitely not one-time. And some of the additional information kind of provides a little bit of a cost comparison of, a relative share comparison of what is currently being, you know, spent on hours versus what could be spent, and some of these other options.
Thank you. That answers my question, and then, you know, the comment I have on it, this, this is a, this is a need, you know, listening to these residents, this is a need, we have to do this. I also need to, I think we need to point out, you know, when we, it's either it costs us 77,000 or 125,000 more, where the property value we're inheriting or, you know, annexing is going to produce a tax revenue of some, somewhere less, some, something less than $1 million a year based on the, the mill rate that we have. Now, you can debate me a little bit on that. So one option, you know, we'll be spending, spending 8% of that, or, you know, closer to 15% of the revenue on this route, and I'm all for doing that. But the point I'll make, and then I'll shut up, is that there's other things, there's all kinds of other things in the budget that are wants, and I would like the other council members to consider this, that this is a need, and some of these other things and, you know, future budget discussions, please keep that in mind, and we can't, everything, everything isn't a, isn't a need, but this, this definitely is. Thank you.
Jay, go ahead.
Yeah, just to address what Dave just said, I, I've been trying to get information about what the town is currently paying for bus service. And what I've, what I've gotten so far is that it looks like the town of Madison is currently paying about $130,000 a year for bus service. What I don't know is how that's broken down between Southdale and Arbor Hills and, you know, where, where that breakdown is, but I am guessing, you know, just looking at how the routes are right now, that about a third of that is Southdale. So let's say we go with this, with this larger route, we're looking at a, we're looking at a difference of about $50,000 a year. And right now, the town of Madison is going to provide, the current tax base is going to provide about $40,000 of that. So the real cost in, in an additional cost would be about $10,000.
Shannon, go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you for everybody who came out. I, I too agree that this is a, this is a need and not a want, and I feel for the kids and our elderly people, our handicapped people that have to take the bus when it gets cold and would have to walk farther or, you know, take their wheelchairs in the snow. I don't think this is something we can skimp on, and I'd be voting for G2.
All right. I don't see anyone else. We can vote on just the amendment now. So this is changing from what's in the, original motion was G1 to the G2 that Jay proposed, which is a little different than what was in the packet as well. So all in favor of changing to the G2 Jay proposed, say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? All right. So now we're back to the now-modified main motion, which is a modified G2 that Jay proposed. Any other further discussion or questions or anything, Gabriel?
I, I was, would be interested in talking about the D2 amendment, which I know is recommended, so it's in the resolution already, but we have received a lot of feedback from the neighbors, especially the ones that, that live further south. So right now, it's the new proposals that goes on Allied Drive completely, not dipping into the city of Madison at all. The amendment is for it to go down Red Arrow Trail, and then jut over on Genoquin back to Allied. The original-
All right. Gabriel, can we pull up a screen of it while we're talking?
Andrew, could you? Thank you. The original route actually goes all the way down to Crescent Road, and then back up to Allied, so there's a significant chunk below, between, under Genoquin, yeah, so Andrew's pulling it up right now, that's the original route. So that, basically, the, the amendment is putting back half of that in. So instead of going across on Crescent Road, it goes across on, on Genoquin, which is quite far north of that. Now, that's an improvement, and I, I'm glad that it's part, it's part of the resolution that's being included. My understanding, early on in the process, when this amendment was discussed, was that that is the best that Metro could do for that route, given the timing. But I just want to ask the question, is it possible to take that route all the way down to Crescent Road, or is that, is that truly like what is the only thing that is on the table?
If Mike wants to maybe answer that?
Sure, I can, I can answer that. So we would not be in support of going all the way down to Crescent, because it would remove the stop pair at Allied and Genoquin, so we do want to have that, that stop there. Would it be possible? It technically would, would be possible, but I, I think our, we would, we would be in favor of maintaining that stop here at Genoquin and Allied.
Joe? Yeah. So I, you know, live about two blocks south of where it would cross on Genoquin, you know, lived in this neighborhood for 11 years, and I'm, I'm in support of the amendment crossing Genoquin, just because I think when you look at the route and the fact that you're really going through apartments the whole, almost the entire way, so I, I think that makes sense, or you're, you're bringing the route through a denser area. If you go all the way down to Crescent, you'd be, you know, going through a lot of single-family homes, which folks still take the bus, but you'd be serving a larger bulk of people. Also, the other thing to consider is that if you go from where the city of Madison, I don't know if somebody could hover their arrow around, but between the city of Madison and the city of Fitchburg, basically between Allied and Red Arrow, so there's like a little ditch, that, that's not sort of congruent, so it doesn't necessarily, yep, where your arrow is. So there's no necessarily through area where it's easy to be able to walk and cross. So I mean, it just makes sense that it goes down Genoquin Road. You've got the Boys and Girls Club there, you have a lot of folks living there, and particularly if you're looking whereby where Apache meets Thurston, up in that corner, yep, hover to your right a little bit, right, right there. So there's a, an apartment building that caters to folks that have physical disabilities, and I did receive several calls from residents in that apartment building in particular. So the walk from there to Allied Drive is really long, especially in the winter, and the same issues you're hearing in the Southdale neighborhood, you would, you would hear right there as well. So I'm, I'm fully in favor of it going down Red Arrow Trail and then crossing over to, to Genoquin. The other, the other thing just to add is like where it's going through, you pass through Shalley Gardens, you pass through Nakoma Heights, so, you know, just, you're reaching, you know, upwards of thousands of people on this route.
Gabriel?
I did, so I, so thanks for the clarification, I appreciate this. I just, I had, I've had people call me, and I want to make sure that we have that on the table, that that's the reason this decision is being made. But I do also just want to say for city staff, for alders, when this network is finalized, we need to really be intentional about outreach immediately, because if, we're making it better tonight, but there are people that are still going to fall through the cracks, and they need to be able to make housing decisions based on this. So I, I hope that we can, you know, work on educating about paratransit, maybe that'll be an option for some people, maybe it's about connecting them with services to find new housing. I don't know what it is, but we need to be really intentional about getting the word out in those neighborhoods as soon as this is final, so that they have as much lead time as possible to make those decisions for themselves. And I think we can do it, we just have to really be intentional and, and work on it as early as possible.
Jay?
Yeah. Mike, I just want to ask you a question before we take our final vote on this. So in the amendment packet, Amendment 16A, or G1, or whatever we're calling it, you have a note on there that says, "Staff recommends contingent on support from the city of Fitchburg", which doesn't exist. There is no support from the city of Fitchburg for that option. And it's, under 16B, it said, "This amendment was not supported by the City of Fitchburg Transportation and Transit Commission on May 12th, therefore, staff does not recommend." So now we have, we have offered a 16B that's modified, so is staff going to recommend that that be part of this plan?
So that staff recommendation was basically based on the outcome of the Transportation and Transit Commission, which I understand doesn't represent all of Fitchburg. That was just, you know, we had to recommend one, and that's the one we did, because that was the, the feedback that we received. I think staff, Metro staff would recommend either 16A, 16A or 16B as it's shown with the, with, with the future connection via Latitude 43. I don't think we would change our staff recommendation to recommend the, the larger loop without the, the longer-term switch to Latitude 43. But we could, if, the city of Fitchburg, of course, is free to, to, to recommend that or to include that in their transit plan, and, you know, these decisions are not something that certainly I can make, these are not staff decisions. And so, you know, we have, we have several policy boards, the city of Fitchburg is one, and then it needs to go through the Madison review process as well. So between those two bodies, that's how the decision will be made. You know, it, staff recommendation is, is, that's what it is, it's a recommendation.
So I guess, I'll get to you in a second, Jay. I guess to clarify, so, Andrew or Mike, so is it possible that we say we want, you know, Jay's amendment here, we don't, maybe we don't put it in Latitude 43, but, you know, we don't want, obviously, to go down there? And is it possible that Massa Metro says, "Well, then, too bad, we are going to reject what you have recommended, and we're just going to do it the original way regardless"? Is that something that's possible?
Well, that's, that's not what we, that's not what we try to do. Typically, we've, over the years, we have worked with the city of Fitchburg to try to come up with, you know, something that, that works for everybody. And, you know, usually there, there becomes a recommendation that, you know, comes out of a planning process, and usually it kind of goes through. This is a little bit different, because this is such a major redesign of the transit network. And so we've, we've kind of let some of these major decisions be made by, by the policy boards. I, what I would suggest is that, well, so, so first of all, one thing, if I could make a suggestion, one thing that I think would make it easier would be that if the larger loop without the future change to Latitude 43 could just have a different name, I think that would be, make it easier for us. If I could recommend a name like 16C, that would, that would, that would be a little bit clearer. But then, what I would suggest is that if, if the city of Fitchburg wanted to recommend that or adopt that, then there would be some follow-up to determine the best course of action to come to a, an understanding of, of what the route should be.
I don't think we care what it's called, we just want it to go down those roads. So yeah, 16C or Jolly Fish or whatever. Yeah, Joe, go ahead.
You know, I, I want to apologize, I, this was a, and I'm really embarrassed by this, but this is a complete oversight on my part, and I had somebody text me about this. Can you put the, bring the map back up of the Allied Jones Marsh neighborhood?
Sure.
So, and I've thought about this earlier, and I don't know why it didn't occur to me right now as we were discussing, but the impact of the route not going down to Crescent actually does miss a lot of apartment buildings, and I don't know why I didn't think about that, but they're basically from, I mean, the entirety of Crescent Road on the south end is, is apartments and duplexes, and there are a lot of residents there. So I'm, I guess I have two questions. One, for Metro and for Andrew, I mean, I, I haven't gotten a lot of public comment on it, but I'm wondering if you have gotten comment from residents that live on Crescent Road? And two, what would be the financial impact of looping down a couple of blocks and over and back up? So if you were to go down Red Arrow, right on Crescent, right on, as Crescent curves in Allied and then back up, how many minutes would that add to the route if, if you have considered that already?
So just to answer your first question, I, I haven't heard specific residents living on Crescent who have complained about this service. This is one of the few areas in, in the region that saw a reduction in, in accessibility for 45 minutes to, to attraction. So it's definitely something that we wanted to address with some amendment, and you're right that there are multifamily down there. I think it, it's also difficult, because if you did that, so basically you would be saying going down Red Arrow to Crescent and then coming back up Allied, it would potentially be missing some other multifamily, so it's kind of which way do you, do you- It would potentially be missing some other multifamily. So it's kind of which way do you, do you go? Um, just with this, the existing street network. That's not a specific one that Metro ca- costed out as far as hours and, and cost. But I can let Mike talk to that if, if that came up in some of their initial discussions.
And maybe just a follow-up, I don't know if you even have this handy, uh, maybe Mike. But do you have numbers on like how many people get on the bus on Crescent versus the other section that we're talking about changing? Because if there's a lot of people that are, are getting on where it goes right now, and there's not many people getting on Crescent, that's one thing. If there's a lot of people getting on Crescent though, that, that's a big concern.
Yeah. So this is uh, twenty twenty ridership data. Um, and so the, the red dots represent magnitude of, of ridership. So this is just boardings. We don't have data on the lightings. I will certainly let Mike talk to this, but uh, you know, you can see relative magnitude on Crescent. It's a little bit lower uh, ridership than some of the other stops.
So the bigger the dot, the more people get on at that spot? So the biggest dot is on the part that we would take out?
Right. So yeah, in that alternative, if you went this way, you know, potentially you would be missing this group. And granted, they could walk uh, south or, or east. Um, but it's kind of, it is, you kind of have to make that a certain determination one way or another. So. So unfortunately you can't serve both roads. Mike, do you have any additional comments?
Uh, no, that, that's correct. Yeah, we did, we did not look at an amendment that would ascend, uh, send Route D two to Crescent for, for those reasons. Uh, if, uh, and, and just so you know, that, that this map is, is publicly available on our website. It's, the URL is hard to, hard to get there, but um, it is, it is available. Uh, the, i- if you click on those dots, you can see the weekday boardings. And February twenty twenty is before the pandemic. Um, the, the pandemic really hit in, in March. And so we crunched these particular numbers. Using specific data that was before the pandemic uh, really affected anything.
Jay, do you have anything?
Yeah, um, Mike, I want to jump back to sixteen B again, uh, or sixteen C. What, what would you prefer we call it? The, for the thing? You just got a unanimous recommendation from the city council for that route. Without this idea of cutting off half that neighborhood once the road gets built, if that road ever gets built. So I guess the question is, um, how many, how many of the people who are sitting here and the people from this neighborhood? Have to show up at the public hearing next week to get a staff recommendation that will go with that?
Uh, I don't exactly know how to answer that question, but I'll, uh, like, just to, to answer your, your first question. I, I, like you, I also don't really care what we call it. I just want to know that we're, we're talking about the same thing. Um, I, I think the most, the, the clearest thing for me would be if we call it a sixteen C. Uh, and just to follow up on my, my previous comment. Um, I, I think, you know, given what we're, we're probably hearing tonight, uh, we, we probably have more planning work to do. And so we probably need to, to, to think about this a little more. And uh, so you know, I, I think we'll, we'll take the results that come out today and uh, we will, uh, we'll think about it more at Metro.
All right. And what, I just want to put, put something else out there. Because um, what's really bothering me about the way this process is going is uh, there are legitimate reasons. There are other legitimate public safety reasons that the city of Fitchburg has for connecting Deer Valley Road uh, across to Latitude forty-three. And I, I kind of feel like uh, we're being held hostage by Metro. That if we build that road, we're gonna, we're, Metro's gonna cut off service to half that neighborhood. Just because we decided we needed to build this road for public safety reasons. And I think that's a, I think that's a bad public policy. I think it is bad to say, "If you do something that is necessary for this neighborhood, we're going to cut off service." So that is why I made this proposal tonight. Because this neighborhood just simply can't tolerate having that service cut.
Anyone else before we vote? Deera?
I'm sorry, I just have a couple more things. Um, just for public understanding, Andrew, can we just put up the rest of the amendments that are being included in this resolution? Just so it's, there's clarity for everybody?
Do you want the maps or the table?
Let's, let's show the, the resolution with the differences.
Okay.
With the actual maps, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so I will go to the city of Fitchburg's version, um, just for clarity, sorry. I think it's here. So, uh, yeah, just for clarity, so this is the base network. I'll, I'll zoom in. Of course, you can't see that. Um, I will go to this map, which shows the overall base network again. Go to the dark gray. So this is the, the base network. Just to clarify, uh, D two is this route that we were just talking about? And this is again in the base. Um, there's an amendment related to that. The Z i- is on the east side of Fitchburg, offering commuter service. There are a number of amendments to that. Obviously, the G we've, we've covered quite a bit. Um, and then the B uh, is a fifteen minute service coming down Fitchetree Road. There's a, a couple of amendments related to that. And so I'll jump over to the amendments. Um, so hopefully you can see these. I'll zoom in as much as possible. This is D two, uh, that we talked about before. Um, that, again, that would just shift from Allied over to Red Arrow. Uh, Z one um, would do a slight deviation into the Terra Vesta neighborhood. At least until a bus stop is uh, can be constructed at Lacy and County Road MM. C two, um, it is entirely kind of exclusively, uh, that change would, would occur in the Ma- Masson, the city of Masson. And that would basically extend service from uh, the Z route, which is commuter route, uh, to not only go to downtown, but go to downtown. Kind of via, um, I believe, uh, Broome and General Drive over to the UW campus. Uh, the Z three, so uh, this, this one is not currently included. Um, would uh, um, basically deviate the Z route, which is a commuter route into the, the um, Southdale neighborhood. This is one of the examples, or one of the amendments that we brought to the neighborhood that uh, didn't have much support at the time. Uh, in, more in favor of the G two and kind of existing Route sixteen service. Um, and we talked a lot about these two, but there's G one and G two, I won't belabor. Um, and then this route B would potentially extend uh, this fifteen minute service. Instead of stopping at Hatchery Hill, it would continue down into uh, the Civic Center Campus and kind of do a loop there, which is approximately one point six miles. Um, additionally, one way, so it would do that loop, um, extend that fifteen minute service further south and connect to the Civic Center Campus. And then, as I mentioned, there is this separate um, B two service that would just reduce service on that B route. Um, to thirty minute headways on Sundays.
And one last thing, if I, if you, if you bear with me. I, I just wanted also note, I, I got some questions about the, the D two route change in, on the other side of Verona Road. Um, which is, there's no amendments related to that, but um, there is like, uh, I, I just like to, I had a couple of questions regarding. And I guess this is to Mike. I assume that the decision about where stops will be and how many stops will be at the next stage of the process. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, that's correct. Uh, so the, the bus stops generally will go where they, they currently are. Uh, you know, in, in some cases, if we're turning left instead of going straight, they'll need to be moved to a different leg of the intersection or whatever. Um, uh, but generally if, they'll just, we'll just use the same bus stops that, that are currently served by existing routes. Um, you know, on streets that currently don't have service, like Anton Drive there, for example. Uh, you know, we'll look at if a bus stop here needs to be added. Generally, our service, our, our standards for bus stops is that they should be uh, about a quarter mile apart. Uh, so we generally use that. And then generally we locate them at places where there are crosswalks, traffic signals, uh, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah. So for this route specifically, you see the white is where it used to go up Williamsburg Way and then down King James Way. And it's a completely different route, but now it's going to be the whole route for the neighborhood's concentrated on Anton Drive. I've heard some feedback from residents in the area that um, a stop on King James and Anton obviously would, would make it a little bit easier to get down. From, for the people that are on that King James Way that use it currently. But then also, uh, at the top of that route, onto Anton and Williamsburg, you know, that, that might also be, I, I don't know if they will automatically put a stop. It seems like a logical place to put a stop, but that might be the easiest way for people that are used to getting on on Williamsburg Way to get um, to get a direct um, walk to the stop. So anyway, I, we'll have to cross that bridge um, at a later date, but I, I just wanted to flag it as something that I've heard that we should um, track. And that's all.
Absolutely. If, if I could respond, there will definitely be stops at those two intersections. Uh, Williamsburg and Anton, and then Anton and King James. We, we currently have bus stops at those intersections. They're in slightly different, actually, I don't think we have them at, at, at Williamsburg. We don't have service there. But we, uh, we have service at King James and Anton. Um, and we, we definitely would put a stop at Williamsburg and Anton. As, as you correctly pointed out, that's a pretty logical place for a, a stop. I don't know what that distance is or if there's a logical crossing place there. We, but um, you know, it, it seems unlikely that we'd have a stop in between, but it's, it's possible depending on the distance. Uh, if you can, if you kind of look, so just to, to go a little bit on, into this decision. The current route in that area is Route fifty-two, which is heading up north towards Whitney Way and the West Transfer Point. Uh, whereas the, the new route, D two, serving the area, is heading towards downtown. And so it's kind of heading in a different direction. And so that kind of uh, fed the decision to move from Williamsburg to Anton. Or uh, or I'm sorry, from King James to Anton. Uh, and then if you kind of look at the, the land uses there, if you zoom in just a little bit, Andrew. Uh, our, our goal is to um, you, you know, we, again, here you see a, a collection of uh, of higher density apartments. And so our, our thought process, I think, was similar to yours, was that if we have a stop pair at An- Anton and Williamsburg. And Anton and Kings Jame, King James, then we've effectively uh, served, served that area. And so Kings, King James would be just sort of a, a deviation on the, the route where people really want to go. Which is, you know, the route is ultimately heading, heading downtown.
Joe? Um, this isn't necessarily a Metro question or something for Metro to have to think about. But um, I'm just also thinking about, if you go along Smithfield, there's um, a lot of apartments. And there is, I, I believe there's fencing between those apartments and the New Freedom. Uh, or the, not, why did I say New Freedom? Um, New Fountains Apartments. Um, I don't know if, you know, in our city planning, we could consider having some sort of an outlet to be able to, for folks to be able to get across there. But if you live like in the middle of Smithfield, it would be a pretty significant walk either way. Either north and east or south and um, west, or south and east to be able to get to one of those proposed bus stops. So I, I'm not sure like who we would even go through or how that would get done in the process of city planning. But I just want to kind of put that out there for us to think about.
All right. Dave, go ahead. We can't hear you, Dave. There you go.
Yeah, took me a sec to get off. The, the bus route, um, I don't ride the bus, you know, I ride my bike everywhere. But I've, I've been listening and probably almost daily, I, I, someone, a resident who Joe knows. And Gabriella knows, has had my ear in explaining everything about the bus routes. It's a person that rides the bus every day. I think she knows more about the bus system, where it goes, where people go than anyone. You know, she's an encyclopedia. And I think we missed the fact, majority of the people, I think, getting on the bus, they're going somewhere in Madison. And I, I just feel going away from the transfer points is a, you know, I, I'm not a transportation designer, but I, I feel it's a step backwards. And I'm, I'm, you know, the amendment G two and, and the, the change, change going down Red Arrow Trail there. I'm, I'm for those, but I'm, I'm going to vote against the overall proposal because I, I feel it's a step backwards for, for people. You know, they're, they'll be transferring out in the middle of nowhere. Um, I, I, that's my, that's my impression. I'm sure it's, you know, it could be all voted, but uh, I, I feel this is a, this is not going to benefit our, our residents very much. Thank you.
Jay, do you want to speak or are you ready to vote?
One last question, Mike. Is, so let's say we call the thing we voted on tonight sixteen C. Is that going to be included with the materials at the public hearing next week? And the Transportation Policy Committee and the Madison Common Council on June uh, seventh?
Yeah, we would add that as an amendment.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else, we can. Yeah, go to the vote. And so this is the amendment in green, except for G one is no longer in there. It's, you call it G three, sixteen C, Allen Express, whatever you might want to call it. Um, so it's, the Southdale route being changed anyway. Otherwise, the other recommendation's as proposed. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, the ayes have it. All right, that is passed. Thank you everyone for being here. We can, do you have anything else? And I think Guan is gone, but, thank you. Thank you, Juan. I guess he's gone already, but is there anything else on T T C?
Can, can I say something just before we go?
Yeah, quick, yeah.
For, for all of you who came tonight, thank you for coming. And I would ask if you have time, uh, go to the Madison Council meeting on, uh, at six thirty on June, I think it's June seventh. Uh, where they're going to make the final vote on this because they need to, they need to know that this is what we want. Because I think you heard tonight that Mike is not going to give this a staff recommendation. So if we want to get this changed, the council's going to have to make it happen.
Uh, if you, if you wouldn't mind uh, me just adding something to that. We have a public hearing on, on this plan on uh, the thirty-first of this, this month, May thirty-first at six P M, I believe. Uh, and so uh, it would also uh, be a good idea to come there and voice your opinion.
Where is that, Mike?
There'll be an online meeting.
Online?
Uh, in front of the Transportation Policy and Planning Board. The details are at uh, mymetrobus.com slash redesign. And thank you for coming as well.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, we, they can't hear you online.
So just a note about the translation. Um, you know, the translation as provided tonight was not adequate. Um, I just did free thirty-five dollar an hour work. And in addition to the translator you provided, I, I'm not saying I'm going to charge you. I'm just saying that, that you guys need to provide that value. Because in addition to coming out with our families and everything tonight, we had to translate. The translation you provided worked when people testified, but no one could understand English back to Spanish. Because there wasn't translation provided for the bulk of the meeting. So you have to provide translation that is either simultaneous interpreting via headsets. This stuff is all worked out. There's systems out there. Fitchbridge needs, needs to plug into that. Because it's an inequity to not have people understand all of the discussion. You can't just provide translation when someone testifies. So we'll work it out. I'll help you guys.
All right, Mar, for T T C?
Yeah, sorry. I, yes, I did want to give a, Andrew um, shared some updates at T T C. And if I, I'll just share the screen if you don't, if you guys don't mind, because um, makes it a little bit easier. So the C T H M M and McCoy Construction scheduled for now to August, there's five stages. And there's going to be a right turn only for part of the construction. So something to flag for people that live in that area. North Fitchetree Road is going to have green mark, green pavement markings installed this month. Lacy Road, uh, design is nearing completion. And we're probably going to start, we, we, I think we were originally anticipating construction start this year. It's not going to, it's likely, well, it's not going to start till next year. So that's a change. Uh, Sine Road, reconstruction from Aurora East Cheryl. So that's a change. Sine Road, reconstruction from Aurora East Cheryl. It is 100% designed, and you can find that link to the project website. And the construction is planned for, as we know, kind of late summer and over the winter. And then LED streetlight conversions, there are grant applications out to do this. And I know we've, you know, put some ARPA funding potentially as a match for those grants that they need to come through. And then the last up is that there's wildlife signage that's going around in the city of Fitchburg. And that's all. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Onto?
Can I ask, can I just add one little piece of input to that?
Yes.
The 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 Highway MM and McCoy Road intersection has been under construct, well, has been blocked with orange barrels and orange sticks for about two weeks now, and it has been marked as right turn only, and people are turning left anyway. They're just running over the sticks in the middle of the road.
Are they U-turn merds? Those not U-turn?
Yeah. So I wonder if it's possible to get, to to ask Public Works if we can put a Jersey barrier in the middle of that, just right on the double yellow striped line to keep people from doing that because they're really creating a dangerous situation. When they go through those posts, they can't turn right away, so they end up going way into the shoulder. And and I mean, I I sat there yesterday, or two days ago, watching this clown show, and there were a couple of accidents that nearly happened there, and and there's no, people shouldn't be doing this. They should be following the sign. But since the sign is too complicated, they're going to probably need something a little more severe. So if we could talk to Public Works about that, that might be helpful.
Chad will take you out.
Thanks.
All right, on to Plan Commission. Randy?
Motion to approve ordinance 2022- O-16, approving rezone request RZ-2443-22 by Bill Buglass, Agent for Payne and Dolan, Inc., to rezone from the R-D Rural Development Zoning District to the IG General Industrial Zoning District on property near Cottonwood Drive, which was postponed from April 26, 2022 meeting.
Second.
Signed by Jade, the Plan Commission approved?
Yes, we did.
You want to speak to it?
Yeah, there's nothing too difficult about it. It's it's basically rezoning, it's a rezone request, which would allow General Beverage to develop a 63,000 square foot warehouse building.
General Beverage wants to expand, and they want to stay in Fitchburg, and so Payne and Dolan is willing to sell them some land to do that.
Exactly, yeah. So it's a it's a good thing.
So this idea has been floating around for a while, and I know there were some concerns. What is that street that runs behind there that ends with the cul-de-sac by the railroad tracks?
Cottonwood.
Is that Cottonwood? Did they figure out the crossing situation there?
Yeah, so it's really in the future where it would be something that they're going to do, and they're going to offset the road from the driveway of the the materials, I'm forgetting the name right now, of course.
It was like 40 feet over to the to the east.
Yeah.
So that wouldn't line up exactly as a full intersection.
It's not really, really, like, they're not going to have, like, there's not going to be an entrance that goes right there for this project itself. But yeah, when they eventually, at some point in the future, we will offset that so that people don't think that they can just drive right through the other business to get out to McKee.
Yeah, I know that was the original concern, that there was, that this was going to create conflicts with the bike trail there, so.
Yeah.
All right, groovy.
All right, seeing nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that's approved. Two.
All right, next, motion to approve Resolution R-91-22, approving certified survey map request CS-2444-22 by Brian Bullier, Agent for Payne and Dolan, to create two billable lots. Lot two would allow General Beverage to develop a 63,000 square foot warehouse. And then, again, this was postponed from the April 26, 22.
Second.
Signed by Jade, the Plan Commission approved?
Plan Commission approved, yeah.
All right, and this is the same project?
Same project, CSM.
Yep. Anything else? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that's approved. Next one?
Uh, next one, a motion to approve Resolution R-118-22 by Brett Stroffkin, Agent for Fairway Apartments LLC, care of David Givers for approval of a certified survey map to create one billable lot and one additional outlot, existing tennis courts off Traceway Drive.
Second.
Signed by Jade, the Plan Commission approved?
Planning Commission approved the CSM.
And what's this one about?
Well, and it should be noted that there are three conditions added. Basically, this is just approving, from what I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mary, it was the CSM in and of itself because of the outstanding issue of the park credits. It hasn't been.
So this is actually separating out the tennis courts because they're looking at, you know, possibly the city taking those tennis courts over at some point in time. That's where we want to build Hub Phase 2. They're working with the city to figure out the best way to transfer that ownership to the city so that we can do something like a Hub Phase 2 on it. But the first step is separating out the tennis courts so that it can then somehow get that to the city, whether it's donate or sell or park land. We'll figure out the best way to do that. So, Gabriel?
This is just a technical thing, but I just wondered if, like, there was, there was no referral sheet for this one, which is just usually helpful because it gives you kind of a general summary. So I assume that that was just probably a technical glitch.
Yeah, yeah, there was one at the, I think we should pack it up. I'm not sure what happened, but, yeah, I'm sorry. All right, seeing nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, that's approved. Next one?
Uh, motion to approve Resolution R-119-22, request by Brian Takski, Agent for Thermo Fisher Scientific, to allow for industrial, office, research, and manufacturing development on property to the east of Spoke Drive and north of McKee Road.
Second.
Signed by Jade, the Plan Commission approved?
Plan Commission approved.
Did Tree Advisory approve?
It has not come before approved Tree Advisory.
Okay. And then you want to speak to this, Randy?
Yeah, I guess the applicant is requesting approval of a preliminary plat for the Thermo Fisher lands. The actual preliminary plat would allow the creation of two lots. And the proposed lot of, the proposed lot at the corner of Spoke and McKee would be sold off for office, industrial, commercial development, and the remaining would be retained by Thermo Fisher for their expansion.
Any questions? Gabriel?
I do have one question. So the, I'm trying to clarify, because the map that is there, it's kind of, it's not north-south, it's kind of turned to the side. The lot that's being sold, that is the one that's right on McKee Road? So it's the one that's currently basically a wood lot?
I think there's a lot of trees on it.
It's down there.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to clarify that that's what it was. Is that something that?
It's on the west side of the path.
So they're going to have to, like, clear cut those trees in order to build on that?
Probably. I don't know what they're building. We don't know who they're selling it to yet, but probably.
Okay.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right, that is approved. Next one?
Uh, motion to approve ordinance 2022- O-19 by David Fahy, Agent for Fahy Land LLC and Fahy 5370 LLC, to rezone from PDDGIP, Plan Development District, General Implementation Plan, to PDD-SIP, Plan Development District Specific Implementation Plan, to allow for residential development of 228 townhomes and multifamily units on property located south of Nobel Drive in Section 15.
Second.
Signed by Jay, the Plan Commission approved?
Plan Commission approved.
And what's this one?
Uh, basically, they're proposed, the proposed market rate rental project of the 228 townhomes and multifamily units, the rezone, the rezoning from A-S to A-X.
We've seen this a couple of times, no changes to it. We do have Greg Held here to answer questions if needed. David Fahy could also answer questions, I'm sure, if needed, but this is exactly what we've seen a couple of times in the past. Seeing no questions, all in favor, say aye.
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 And anyone opposed, nay? All right, that's approved.
All right, moving on. Uh, motion to approve ordinance 2022- O-20 by Gerald D. Torgensen, Agent for In Kahoots LLC, to rezone from B-8, which is highway business, to B-G, general business, to allow for a variety of commercial uses and to allow a commercial kitchen in the B-G district as a conditional use.
Second. Signed by Jade, the Plan Commission approved?
Plan Commission approved.
All right. I, shoot, I meant to print it out. We did get a letter from Jeff, who's the head of the neighborhood, and he was in favor of this as well. Unfortunately, I forgot to print it off to read it, but he did say that he thought this would be a good use. I know we have some people here online. I don't know if Jessica or anyone else wants to speak to this at all. If not, that's okay. You're available for questions as well.
I am.
All right, any questions or comments at all? All right, seeing none, then we can go to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? Excellent, that is approved. Thank you, everyone. And that is it for Plan Commission. Public Works, Dave?
I'll move approval of Resolution R10422, accepting the partial assignments and assumptions of agreement for subdivision improvements in the plat of Highland Reserve.
Signed by Jade, the Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
And what's this one?
Uh, the Highland is being basically divided, or part of it is going to be taken over. I believe it was Veridian Homes. It's like a 70, 70 acre versus 18 acre. And we needed an agreement who was responsible for for what parts. And so Mr. Balki and Mr. Fahy, they hammered this out to add amendments to these agreements so that the division of responsibilities is clearly laid out. And at Board of Public Works, we we stressed very stringently that we are not interested in hearing anything come back where someone said, well, they were supposed to do it. No, they were supposed to do it. And Mr. Fahy has assured us that that will not not happen.
All right, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, nay? That is approved. Anything else on Public Works?
Nope.
All right, Park Commission, Julie's not here. I know they haven't met yet. Library Board?
On behalf of the Library Board, I would move approval of Resolution R97-22, amending the 2022 library fund budget to include an outreach LTE staff.
Signed by Gabriella, did Library Board approve?
We did.
Did Finance approve?
Yes, Finance approved.
You want to speak to this?
Yeah, just briefly. The Friends of the Fitchburg Library have donated some money to, for this outreach person. And I believe we have, there's going to be a proposal in the 2023 budget to have this part-time person on. But obviously outreach is something that's important with the Town of Madison and some of the other neighborhoods that lost service, lost bookmobile service. So, uh, basically, there's no budgetary impact because it's being funded by a donation for this year.
All right, any questions or comments?
I think we still need a two-thirds vote, though, because it is a budget amendment.
Okay. There's no dollar impact, probably, even though since they're donating money.
Well, whatever, I'm not.
I don't think we'll be, I think we'll be all right, either way. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Hey, we made it. Anything else for Library Board?
Nope, that's all we had.
All right, Commission Agent Well?
Oh, oh, wait a minute.
Hold on, sorry, sorry.
We have started talking about a problem that the library is going to be experiencing, and that is that with the addition of the Town of Madison, that's 1,500 residents, and with the rapid growth that we're having with all the multifamily units that are being built, we currently, we currently are exempt from paying the Dane County Library Service us because we have a library that has a large enough collection. The required size of the collection is based on population. And so as, what's happening now is that our, and our population is growing faster than we are adding volumes to our collection. And there is some concern that if we don't increase our collection at a little bit faster rate, that we are going to have a problem. Now, Wendy is on the, is dealing with Dane County Library Service, trying to get some of these standards changed because one of the things that she's concerned about is that it's preventing us from getting rid of older stuff that we don't need anymore, that doesn't get checked out. Like, you know, we may have 10, 10 copies of something that only gets checked out once a year, but because we, because we have to keep our collection in order to meet this standard, there's some concern. So right now, she's projecting that in 2024, we will probably be about 40,000 volumes short. Or 40,000 volumes short, I think it was, not 40,000. So we are, we will have to continue monitoring this, and she's going to continue working with Dane County Library Service, but we may have to up our expenditures on new volumes if something doesn't change.
All right. How about Commission Agent Well, Dave?
We don't have too much. They're having a travel show on, I believe, railroads of the, of the southwest United States. And then in June, I believe, the 16th starts, they have a 10 session, 10 or six session ballroom dancing at a very reasonable price of $60 introductory ballroom dancing. And my wife and I have taken those in the past, and there, it's very good. I would encourage people to take, take advantage of that. So that's all I had on Commission Agent Well.
And I know last Wednesday, we had a celebration on Older Americans Month, and so they had me stop by. They celebrated, there's 20-some people that were at least 90 years old at the event, and a lot of other people as well, so it was great. Oh, yeah, when are you going to demonstrate the ballroom dancing for us?
Uh, I think you're going to wait a long time. It used to be good, not any, not anymore.
All right, how about Seda?
Seda will be meeting May 26, 7.
Oh, oops, sorry, RCC.
So for RCC, I have one item. There is an event on June 2. It's an invasive species tour in McKee Farms Park. The representatives from the South Central Invasive Partnership will be leading a tour and kind of giving you a sense of what those invasive plants look like and what you can potentially do about it in your home. There was also an article in the May Fitchburg Star by Ron French, who's the Chair of the RCC, about eight invasive species. So that June 2 event, and I I don't see it on the city website, so if you could, maybe we could put on Newsflash since it's coming up so soon, but maybe hope to see a couple of you there. Thanks.
All right, need to bring post notes with you, Chad? Egg and Rural Affairs?
Uh, we have not met of late, but we do have a meeting scheduled for, committee meeting scheduled for June 21st.
All right, EMS?
I got nothing.
Nothing, all right. Bicycle Committee?
No updates to report at this moment.
All right, Tree Advisory, Julie's not here. I know they're working on their tree preservation ordinance and want to run it by, I think, myself and Chad to get our feedback, so continue to work on that. Lamark's Preservation?
We have not met.
All right, Housing Advisory?
Uh, next meeting is June 13.
All right, Healthy Neighborhoods?
We will not be meeting for a while.
All right, Finance Committee?
Okay, Finance. We met earlier this evening, but a motion to approve Resolution R-96-22, adopting the 2023 annual city budget schedule.
Second.
Signed by Jay, and do you want to speak to this, or Misty looks like she might be online if you want her to?
Well, it's pretty simple, straightforward. The resolution provides a schedule to be used to accomplish the adoption of the city budget, but I think there's one, and correct me if I'm wrong, Misty, but the, uh, we're moving up the date, the final date a week early because of the election. Is that correct?
Our meeting in November, yeah.
Yeah, our November meeting, based on the schedule. You want to?
Anything else, Misty, you want to add?
Nope. Well, sure, we're doing this just a little bit early so that we can get these meetings on your guys' calendar.
Excellent. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? That's approved. Next one?
Uh, motion to approve Resolution R-99-22. Uh, motion to approve resolution R dash nine-nine dash two-two, amending, amending the twenty twenty-two budget in various funds. ARPA, TID closure investment plan projects.
Second.
Sent by Jay, and did finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, do you want to speak to this one?
Uh, since we have Misty on, we'll, we'll let her jump right in.
All right.
So the council approved the ARPA and TID closure investment plan a few meetings back now. Uh, that is about five point two million dollars of one-time money that we're expecting to receive between twenty-one and twenty-two. Uh, so that investment plan really just narrowed the scope. So of all the different things that we could spend that money on, council identified about seven million dollars worth of projects that you wanted to continue the conversation about. It did not appropriate funds, it did not budget funds, it was just a yes, continue to look at this. So now we're at the point where we want to start moving to the next step with some of these projects. So what's included now is a twenty twenty-two budget amendment for kind of that first batch of projects that we would like to get started on in twenty twenty-two. I'd split into two sections, uh, some that are proposed to be funded by ARPA funding, some proposed to be, uh, funded through the TID closure funding. I made that determination on which bucket, um, based on which one I thought was the best match and would be the least amount of administrative burden to do. Um, so that's why it's in one bucket versus the other. And then there are more projects coming, uh, so you'll see more projects when we do the twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-two CIP, uh, which comes out in June. And then there will likely be additional projects in the twenty twenty-three operating budget when we get to that point. Uh, this is just that first batch of projects we'd like to start on.
So if I remember right, during last year's budget process, people said, hey, I want to do this, I just want to use ARPA or TID funds for it. And so now that we actually have those ones available, we're saying, all right, we said we want to do this year, this year, so we want to get started. All right, you're right.
I, I kind of related question, in terms of the CIP, uh, the proposed, are the ones that were included in the, in the ARPA TID plan, were those all incorporated into the CIP? During some years, or are those some of those things that perhaps we put forward are gonna have to be put into the CIP through an amendment?
I believe they'll all be in the CIP, they won't all be neck, in like next year's CIP, but they should slot, I believe, if I remember right, from what we saw earlier, they are slotted in there.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. Anything else for finance?
No, nothing else.
Anything for personnel?
We meet on June sixth.
All right, anything for public safety?
Just, uh, tonight, we approved, um, six new operators licenses of various establishments. Large amount of events, uh, birthday graduation parties and the concerts in McKee Park are starting in, uh, June. One in June, one July and August, so please, please put those on your calendar, that's all.
Great, all right, mayor's report, just a few things. Uh, kids building Wisconsin event was successful. We had about seven thousand people who came to that event. It's one of the biggest events we have in the city. Thank you for Tri-North, for again, having that here in Fitchburg. Also, uh, in yesterday, we welcomed four new members of our police department in a pinning ceremony. So want to welcome them. Couple of them just finished their academy training, a couple had that academy training, but welcome to those new officers. And then I know we were also getting some goats at the dog park to help deal with some invasive species, which I think is fantastic. And I did ask Chad to, you know, look into, are there other areas where it might make sense to use something like that? So we'll see how it works. We'll kind of use this as an evaluation, but it's in, yeah, go ahead.
Wait, do they live there all the time or do they just come, like they visit?
They're gonna, for a short period of time, they fence them into a certain area and that where there's a base of, and then they'll eat invasive in that area and I think it's like two weeks or something like that, and then they take them home.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, they're not permanently there.
Yeah, they were in the, like, park near Arpa Hills along Cannonball last summer. It's crazy.
It's maybe in Seminole Glen, maybe they need some over in Seminole Glen. That's Randy's favorite area. All right.
Wrong with dogs.
That's, uh, that's all I've got. So all the reports, I believe we start with District Two, this, uh, meeting, Gabrielle?
No report from me.
All right, Jay?
Uh, well, main thing was getting to know, uh, residents of Southdale has been quite an experience. We've had, uh, a couple of meetings. We had the business meeting last night. I got there after you left, so. But, um, you know, Pete, there's a, there's a, there, there's a little bit of excitement and interest in what Fitchburg's gonna do. And there's also a little concern, cause it's a change and, you know, we don't like change, so. Um, uh, but I think overall, things feel like they're moving a little smoother. Um, and I think people are starting to, uh, to, uh, you know, they're, they're starting to gain some, uh, some confidence that Fitchburg's gonna look out for their interests. So, um, I do want to thank the council for supporting my amendment tonight on the bus. Uh, that was really important and it's gonna be really important to follow up on it and continue to make sure that Metro makes it happen. Um, but there's gonna be other things coming and I, you know, we've talked about some of those things already, so. Uh, that's the main thing, and then, uh, I will not be here tomorrow night. My son is having his last recital of his school year before he heads off to college, so. Uh, there's so, it's kind of interesting watching this little creature that I somehow, uh, contributed some DNA to, and now he's going to go be a school teacher, so. I'm very proud of the things he's accomplished.
Excellent, congrats. Shannon? Nothing, Jim?
Nothing to report.
All right, Randy?
Uh, just one item, uh, this past Saturday, uh, there was a tree planting at Pinnacle Park. And, uh, it was more of a learning session, but participating as well. But, uh, the Sierra Club sponsored, it was from Arbor Day and Jake Johnson, uh, representing Sierra. Uh, several other members, Sue Easterday from, uh, Parks Commission was there in attendance. Myself, but, uh, I think most, more importantly, it was a number of students from Madison West. And, uh, we all got our hands dirty and, um, planted a number of trees in Pinnacle Park, which is just off of Post Road, um, east side of Fish Hatchery. So anybody that wants to see, there was actually good pu- uh, press coverage as well. It's out there in Channel twenty-seven.
Excellent, all right, thank you. Dave?
I think you're all aware, uh, we had a, we had a fatality and a, and a fire at twenty eighteen, a Red Arrow Trail last week. Uh, unfortunately, um, you know, could have been much worse, it's, you know, one person was killed, they had the potential for many more. Uh, unfortunately, many of the residents, you know, there's sixteen apartments and there are only four of them had renters insurance. And so their, um, the Red Cross, those vouchers will run out shortly, so a, a GoFundMe site has been set up. Uh, if you go on next door, you'll, you'll find it to help donate to those, uh, those families in need. There's a lot of people with, you know, and, um, limited, limited capabilities there that could use your help. They're kind of, gonna be homeless shortly, so anything you can do to help those, those residents. And second, um, we're in need, uh, with the expansion of our community garden, I, I need some more, uh, as I was saying, I need some more, if you have any landscape fabric, you know, that you're not using, it's laying around in your garage, or any boards in decent condition, you know, for borders that you're, they're not, not using, you want to get rid of, uh, drop them over at the, uh, community garden for us, so we'll put them, put them to good use for you. Thank you.
Go ahead, Jim.
Hey, Dave, would you mind sending a link to the GoFundMe and maybe the list of things that you're interested in for the community garden? I'd be happy to share that out, um, but if you could just email it to us?
Absolutely, Gabrielle.
Great.
We'll try to get it done as soon as the meeting's over with here. Thank you for asking.
Joe?
Yeah, thanks, uh, Dave, appreciate your work on the, um, helping the residents, um, displaced. I gotta reemphasize the public, the need for renters insurance because, uh, same thing happened to our family in twenty, uh, two thousand nine, and, um, nobody in our unit had, um, had renters insurance except for us, so it's, it's disastrous, um, effect for, for somebody that doesn't have it, it's cheap. Um, so I got a couple of updates, um, one, uh, this is sort of a work thing as well, but, um, the UW extension is going to be having a restorative justice, um, youth summit. Uh, it's gonna, uh, projected to have about a hundred youth and twenty-five adults. Uh, it'll be at the Boys and Girls Club, um, allied location, which is in District One. Um, it'll be June sixteenth, which is a Thursday, uh, from ten thirty to three thirty. Uh, if you don't know what restorative justice is, it's essentially an approach to, um, seek to repair harm by providing an opportunity for those harmed, um, and those who take responsibility for the harm to communicate and address their needs at the aftermath of a crime. So, you know, essentially taking a different approach to, to punishment. Um, there'll be a national speaker there and there'll be, uh, folks from all across the state of Wisconsin, workshop presenters, speakers, um, restorative circles. Um, so I highly encourage you, um, you know, whether you're a young person or work with young people to, um, go, if you Google, uh, extension restorative justice summit, um, it should take you straight to the webpage and, um, registration's only ten dollars, so, uh, it's a pretty good deal. You get a whole day, a meal, um, and it's, uh, in the middle of summer. Um, the other thing is, um, the series of bike events that have, uh, been happening throughout the district, um, are coming to a close. So today, there was one at, um, Western Hills Park, um, there's another one next Tuesday, um, from four thirty to six thirty. So I highly encourage you to check that out, get your bike fixed, um, and learn about kind of simple repairs. Um, and then yesterday, um, we had a, um, public workshop for the, um, teen center engagement study. Um, we presented out the information, uh, the data from, from the engagement process that's taken place over six months. Um, almost four hundred surveys had been collected, uh, over two hundred of those actually coming from teens. Um, and there, you know, was an overwhelming support for, um, the efforts, um, shown through those surveys. Fact TV recorded it and they'll be posting it, um, pretty soon, once they put together the footage. Um, eh, I just want to give a shout out to Acquidubai Design, they've done an incredible job, um, as well as Dane County Extension and, um, UW Health Healthy Kids, um, program. Um, and the teen interns, um, have done an incredible job of, uh, engaging their peers and, uh, the community as well. So, um, it's just a testament to the fact that when you let, um, folks that are impacted lead, um, you get better results. So, um, more to come soon.
All right, Gabrielle?
Just a thought, um, when that project is done or nearing completion, it would be great if we could bring those teens in here, acknowledge them for their work. I think that getting young people into City Hall for something is really powerful, so something to consider.
Yep, um, they'll be presenting in front of the, um, committee of the whole in July. So, um, uh, they'll, they'll be coming as lo- as well as equity by design.
Maybe we could do like a resolution or something to, to acknowledge their work, uh, some, a thought.
I'm down.
All right, I got a few direct referrals. Dave, you want to start? So, public works.
Yes, so first one, uh, resolution R one oh eight twenty-two, accepting a public water main easement on lot two of CSM nineteen fifty-eight.
Is that, was that motion to approve?
A mo- motion moved to approve.
Sent by Jay, did public works approve?
Public works approved.
Did plan commission approve?
Yes.
All right, what's this one, Dave?
I believe this was one where we missed, uh, um, I think we missed having a easement for the water main on, up in Hatchery Hill. If I, if this one serves me correctly.
Yeah, I think there's one in the concrete cleaner lot, there's through the lot that isn't necessary anymore. We found that when we were doing some other work.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, is Bill, Bill on? This one is eluding me a little bit, uh.
Uh, it doesn't look like he's on, but.
Yeah, he's not on.
It was one that we didn't need it, haven't used, don't need, and we can handle it on our way. Other stuff, so, any questions?
So, are we eliminating the easement? Cause that's not what the language.
I think we're adding it.
Oh, thank you.
We're adding it.
Oh, sorry.
It was, it was overlooked.
Overlooked, so it didn't get recorded. Okay, sorry.
I don't think we had one there, you know.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? That's approved, next one, Dave?
Move approval, resolution R one oh nine twenty-two, preliminary assessment resolution for the twenty twenty-two Lacy Road sanitary sewer and water main improvements.
Second.
Sent by Jay, the public works approve?
Public works approved.
The finance approve?
Finance approved, yeah.
All right, what's this one?
So we're adding sanitary sewer, uh, on Lacy Road, you know, from, essentially from, uh, um, Syene going, going on Lacy, we go through, uh, a couple of, um, go by a couple of existing residents and then we hit, I believe it's the limerick, uh, the, the large development there, and so this is, um, to give the, give the approval to, uh, uh, form the, um, limerick assessment, you know, to determine the cost for doing this, this project.
All right, any questions at all? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And opposed, nay? That one's approved, another one, Dave?
Move approval, resolution R one twelve dash twenty-two, releasing a public water, uh, public utility easement on Outlet sixteen in Terre Bessa.
Second.
Sent by Jay, did part, public works approve?
Public works approved.
Did plan commission approve?
Landing commission approved.
All right, what's this one?
I believe this is one where, uh, we, there was some, I believe some alleys and, um, they had, they, they had a, um, easement, easement through there and they determined they did not need it anymore. And so he was, we are releasing that, releasing that utility easement. We have other, other routes to, uh, to, uh, provide these services.
Yeah, this is that River Song, um, senior assisted living, but was five lots and they bought all five and created it two. And so they don't need the, these, yep. Questions, all? Uh, in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? That's approved, and then maybe Randy, you want to do this one? So it looks like finance saw it.
Sure, motion to approve resolution R dash one-two-three dash two-two, amending the twenty twenty-two general fund budget, assessor contractual services.
Second.
Sent by Gabriella, did finance approve?
Finance approved.
I see Amy's online. Do you want to say anything about this one, Amy, if you're still awake? All right, you are.
I am still awake, yeah. Um, basically, we have a vacancy right now for the commercial appraiser. And, um, due to that, we're trying to get the, you know, as you know, this is an extremely busy time. We're trying to get the assessment notices out. Um, and so this would be a short-term, um, contractor, contracting, a commercial appraiser to come in and help us finish this, we're all, um, out for the year. There may be some overlay, over, um, it may overlap if we, when we can fill that, um, full-time vacancy. Um, and we do have, we underfill the, um, the residential appraiser and the property appraiser. And so we actually have three technicians right now, and so we have the cost savings, um, from underfilling those positions. And that would be what would be used to pay for this, um, contracted position right now.
Jay?
Uh, why are we having difficulty filling the position? Is it, are we not offering enough money or what's, is the market just moved beyond what we've budgeted for or what's, what's going on?
It's, um, a lot of it, a lot of the, um, experienced assessors are retiring. Um, and just like in most positions, there are vacancies. Um, and it, it's just, it's just a difficult type of position to fill right now.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that is approved as well. Thank you for sticking with us, Amy.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next meeting of the whole is tomorrow night, and next council meeting is in, uh, three weeks, actually, I believe. And so.
Move for a German.
Second, by Jay, sent by Joe, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? You read my mind, Jay.